Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, November 2nd, 2020, and this is a Moscow City Council regular meeting.
Art? Good evening. Would you join and rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Art. With that, we will go on to our next item, which is the approval of the Moscow City Council meeting on October 5th of 2020.
I'd be happy to move approval of those minutes.
Second.
And consent agenda.
That is it. That's the only thing on there, Art.
Yeah, and it was October 19th. I think that was just a Scrivener's error, but it was October 19th.
Okay. And there's Ann. Okay, we've got a motion by Art and a second by Gina to approve the consent agenda, which was the approval of the Moscow City Council minutes. I will start to roll with Gina.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
Brandy.
Aye.
And Ann.
Aye.
Okay, Ann. Okay, staff recognition report. Gary, do you have anything for us this evening?
We have one, but it will be covered during the Citizen Commission Report.
Okay. Mayor's appointments, I do not have any this evening. Item number four, public comment, mayor's response period, where we allow 15 minutes for folks to talk to us and tell us what's on their minds. And all we ask is that it is something that is not on this evening's agenda and/or something in front of the Board of Adjustment or Planning and Zooming. So if you would like to say something and come up, please come up to the podium, tell us what your name is, and we will give you three minutes, folks, to tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff. My name's Mark Leeper with Disability Action Center Northwest, and recently, October was Disability Awareness Month, and this was the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act this year. And I've been around for all of that with Disability Action Center. And we did a project in Moscow. We decided to go around and really acknowledge some of the accessibility features, and so we did a program called ADA Rocks. And so some staff and volunteers painted rocks, and we looked for 50 elements in the community that were accessible for people with a disability, that obviously some effort had gone through. And we found that was really easy to find. And so we wanted to come here tonight and first and foremost, just express our appreciation on behalf of people with disabilities. I've been working with the Americans with Disabilities Act for a lot of years. Just the attitude of city staff, elected officials, folks throughout the community of Moscow that tends to be so darn welcoming for everybody, includes people with a disability among that group. And so it was easy to find those places. We had people pick up the rocks, and then they would let us know, and we had T-shirts, and they can get a photo with them, and they could come by. We had a drive-through event and maintain better social distance than I did when I came in and was excited to see somebody and kind of forgot. So I apologize. But anyway, we wanted to present to the city. And Mr. Mayor, if I can offer this to you, it is a...
Why don't you just come down there with you, Maureen?
All right. Moscow Rocks.
Let's get out here soon.
How's that? Sounds good. So we sure appreciate it.
We're smiling at it either. There we two.
The 50 places that was very easy to find that have accessible features in the city for all of the 18,000.
Well, one of them is right here as well. See, no, I spotted one. I said to myself, why did who in the world left this gorgeous little rock here? And I thought, well, somebody left this here, so I shouldn't figure that and put it in my truck. So I left alone.
We could have found more, but you know, some people, some of those older folks were wise enough to say, let's hold off on the painting anymore.
Anyway. You know, Moscow does rock, and Disability Action Center Northwest is a wonderful organization. I've said this many, many times about the city of Moscow. We are a diverse and inclusive community. We all know that, and sometimes we're all tested by that a little bit, but that's not necessarily a bad thing, because it also makes us all Americans too. And so we look forward to those things, and as long as we can be congenial about it, and all of us be kind as we possibly can, whatever our beliefs are. So thank you very much.
We're with you 100%, and thank you.
Thank you.
Here, David, let's get a good shot for TV land out there, people who's watching us. One of us, very nice.
Mr. Mayor, it makes me think of just recently with some of the staff out there doing that grinding downtown on the sidewalks to try to even out those, some of those lips that were a challenge for people in wheelchairs. So I mean, it's, some of those things are just constantly going on, and we don't necessarily always have attention drawn to them, but...
I, Brandy, I stopped last week. I was down there, my wife and I were, we had lunch, and I complimented the people who were working on those. I said, thank you so very much for doing this, because I think I hit every single one of them and tripped myself on them. So it was very nice that they were doing that. They did a great job for us. Okay, are there others that would like to come up and speak this evening? Okay, with that, we were going to move on to item number five, Farmer's Market Costume Contest Presentation. We have Amanda, I'm going to with us this evening. Hello, Amanda.
Good evening. I'm just gonna take a moment. The glare on the screen's always really bad, and I'm short, so it just takes me a moment to adjust.
You may be short, but you're a mighty person, so...
All right, good evening, city staff, council, and Mayor Lambert. So as many of you are aware, the Moscow Farmer's Market wrapped up this crazy 2020 season. I know what you're coming out here for, Dave.
Just the full screen.
Yeah, I did it.
You just did.
I did it.
And I minimized the...
The, this up here? Okay.
Thank you, Amanda.
So the Moscow Farmer's Market ended its 2020 season on Halloween this year of all days, which was really exciting for us, even though we didn't have the full 27 weeks. It was still a good time had by all, and we were able to pull off the Halloween costume contest in a very socially distant and responsible way. And before we get into this, we will probably be coming back, myself, Jamie and I, to the commission in early 2021 to provide numbers on the end-of-season reporting. But I do just want to give a shout out before I forget to, it's not just the Community Events Division that puts on the Farmer's Market every year. We definitely rely on support from several other departments. Streets puts out our over-the-highway banners every Friday pending not-serious-wind activity. And our Parks and Recreation Department, Calvin Macy and his crew are phenomenal working with us downtown. We always get a seasonal person making sure that the trashes are taken care of, the bathrooms are clean. So we just want to give a big shout out to that. And Carrie Edwards over in Engineering is always doing last-minute print jobs for us on A-boards and calculating numbers. So I just wanted to recognize some state staff that even in a non- or a pandemic year, they help us put on the market. So we have a few presentations that we're going to give awards this evening, but we do want to recognize everyone that participated in the costume contests this year. We had five categories, the first one being the adult costume contestants. So we'll just have a series of pictures that we'll scroll through, and then at the end have the winners of each category. And we had a lot of fun with this, and Jamie, feel free to jump in if there are any costumes that you liked in particular. Jessica Briarly, former AmeriCorps member with the Community Events Farmer's Market Division, participated. And then this is Anka. Her husband is here this evening, and he won one of the categories.
You lost your screen there.
Oh, Dave, we lost the screen out here. I don't know if that makes a difference.
Turn it around.
So we'll just hold up here while Dave is doing his job. This is Shar Stevens. She was a vendor, but this is her first year with the Farmer's Market, and she is the owner of White Pine Hummus.
And she wore that dress all day.
All day.
Oh, man.
Yes.
Really?
Not a coat either. Like, she really committed to her costume, so... And then we had the best adult costume. Madison won for her award. I also want to recognize the commission members who were on the judging committee for this. It was Ryan Lazo, Jenny Ford, and Mackenzie Lawrence. They took their time to go through and judge all the costume contests. So Madison, I don't think she's in the audience this evening, but her prize...
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, perfect. I didn't recognize you without your longest hair. So Madison, why don't you come on up to get your pumpkin trophy? That'd be great. And then Madison, if you just want to turn around, we'll get your photo with Jamie.
She should have dressed up.
And as part of the awards this year, we wanted to make sure that we are also supporting our downtown business neighbors. So we went around and got gift certificates from businesses that offer like toasty warm drinks with the colder weather about. So everyone has a chance to go and get a seasonal beverage at one of the many wonderful downtown businesses that we try and be good neighbors with throughout the market season. So group family costume, they already picked up their prize, but we had a lot of fun with this one. There's a lot of families that came out. This group of girls who are all dressed up as gnomes were walking down the sidewalk at 8:30 on their way to Breakfast Club, and I stopped them, and I said, please come back for the costume contest later.
Nice.
So we had a lot of fun. We had some more free-range vegetables that were not part of our normal vegetable crew.
And two dogs.
Yeah.
Well, three, I guess, if you count that one.
Yeah. But a lot of fun here.
The family group was by far our most popular group, so if we do this in the future, we'll probably have to increase the prizes, because people definitely liked working together.
Yeah, and so these were the winners. I've been told that this is by a video game. Is that correct? I think that's, it's called Among Us. I'm not up with the pop culture, but that's what I was, I was told, is they were dressed up as a video game character. So they already picked up their prizes earlier today, but as part of their trophy, they also got a locally authored book by Tom Picarella, who is not only a city employee, but he's also a vendor with the Farmer's Market and co-author of Transylvania Traveler, a travel guide for monsters, ghosts, vampires, et al. If anyone knows Tom, he, everyone knows that this is his favorite time of year. And then, of course, a $10 gift card to Panhandle Conan Coffee. They don't just do ice cream, they actually also offer a wide variety of espresso drinks as well. And then creepiest costume, this was a lot of fun. We didn't have a lot of people in this category, but the one that took the prize, again, I think it was from Mad Max.
Yeah.
What was it exactly? Was it a video game again?
No, it's a creature from the movie Mad Max, the original one.
Yeah.
Her entire costume came from Goodwill. She literally made stilts and then walked on crutches. We saw her coming from like a mile away, and all kind of just started bowing down to her in a little second.
Yeah, so she gets this really creepy black skull candle from the Moscow Food Co-op, and then a $10 gift card from One World Cafe. Hannah was supposed to be here this evening, maybe she'll turn up by the time this presentation ends, but she definitely took the cake on that one. Best youth costume contestants, we had a wide array of folks, and as you can see, the backdrops changed, so folks had a chance to choose a backdrop they were interested in. We had a family-friendly autumn pumpkins, or for those really enthusiastic about the creep factor of Halloween, a creepy graveyard and cemetery. And so a lot of friendly faces here, really adorable ones.
The dog.
I believe the T-Rex was like our second, if not first.
First one, yeah.
First one, right off the bat.
Our youngest was a two-week-old P who was in the group contest, the family free-range vegetables.
Yeah. And then Verin, is that, Verin is here this evening to accept his award.
Woo!
And if you don't know, this is King Boo from Mario Kart, another video game from my childhood.
Nice.
And because we want to keep our youth healthy, they got a $10 gift card to the Moscow Food Co-op and Palouse Juice.
Nice.
We are the Farmer's Market, Sandra. And then we have our least effort costume category. I participate in this. Jamie and David participate in this, which made sense, I think, for us that we're working the event. I had a few friends also participate in this one, so we had a lot of fun with it. Dave was tricked into dressing up and participating. And then, while you can't quite see it here because of the backdrop, he is wearing horns, and it worked out very, very well. I won't, I won't repeat what he told me his counterpart was, but you can ask him later. So Reed, why don't you come on up and get your prize for least effort costume?
Yeah, there's a lot of little things.
Very nice.
All right.
I love it.
I was impressed that Reed just literally showed up and went, okay. Put his horns on, walked up, that was it.
So we got a lot of positive feedback about the costume contest, people not knowing what was going on with trick-or-treating this year, and then, of course, downtown trick-or-treating being canceled. And we were happy to provide the opportunity in a safe way and really end the market on a high note and have gorgeous weather for it. But that's, that's everything. I'd be happy to field any questions from anyone.
Amanda, the neat thing about this is Halloween, and there was all kinds of different things that went on that I heard from people that did their own little things in their own houses and stuff, but this sort of thing is nice, so people can have a little bit of fun with what they're doing. And, you know, through this time that we're going with this pandemic and all the stuff we're working with, this sort of thing really is fun for our community and fun for people to get a, get a chance to do. And I was talking to somebody and their own little family, they had little bags of candy that they hid, hid like Easter eggs, and then had, and others that had treasure hunts and things of that nature in their own homes. And I thought it was very creative, but a neat way to be able to take kids and celebrate and have, and adults were involved with it as well. So I think that's pretty neat, and folks just need to be able to have some fun once in a while, and so that was a cool event in my view, so.
Yeah, we were just, we were glad we could offer it, and, you know, that it made sense the way we were doing it, so.
Absolutely. Any questions for Amanda? Maureen?
This isn't a question. This is something I think I've said several times this summer. I am so impressed at how well you and your staff have done this year in terms of being totally adaptable and flexible and making it fun in spite of all the different things that kept, oh, well, we can't do this this year, we can't do that, and you came up with new fun ideas. And I really want to applaud your whole department on how well you've done.
Oh, thank you.
So thank you very much.
Yeah.
Well, some of the, some with that, Maureen, too, is the drive-in thing down here in the parking lot for people to pick up stuff was a huge success this year, and I know you're even looking at implementing that in as we go forward. Do we have another one of the winners out there?
I think, I think that's what I'm being informed about, yeah.
Okay, well, let's get them, let's get them in here.
Hannah, come on over, yeah.
And who is this?
This is Hannah, right? She was the one on the stilts as a creep.
Oh, hey, wow!
Yes.
Man, I'm glad she didn't try to make the stairs with that costume she had on.
It was pretty impressive.
That was very impressive.
We did tell, we had one person ask about the person in the costume, and I, I used the pronoun "she" and instantly got a, that's a girl? So, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much for stopping by.
Good job, Amanda, or Hannah.
All right.
Very nice. But anyway, you know, it's kind of an interesting thing, even though the different things that we've had to deal with, we've learned some new things that we can do differently, and sometimes that's not all bad. That's good to be able to look out of the box and do something different once in a while. And I think everybody agreed, this year has been different. No disagreement on that from anybody. Anyway, thank you very much, Amanda.
Yeah.
Nice presentation.
Yeah.
Good job. With that, we got a Citizens Commission Report from the Tree Commission. I got Dwight Curtis coming up here and all that. Dwight out of the stage for a few moments. Hello, Dwight, good evening.
Good evening. So we're going to take just a slight detour of what we were going to do tonight, and I just can't help myself, I just have to brag a little bit myself, on Dave Schott. Now, Dave's our Assistant Parks and Rec Director, but he's also our city's arborist. And even though we don't really have an arborist division or a crew that that's their specific job, he still has the work to do and, and his crews. And so we submitted him for the Arborist of the Year Award through the International Society of Arboretage Culture. This was competition with Seattle, all those big cities on that side, Spokane, everything in the Northwest. And little Moscow, without even a, a division for arboretage culture, won this, and we won it specifically because of the amount of good things that they do, and talking to the Tree Commission as well, without the resources that the typical bigger departments have. And they like that. And so anyway, it's my chance to brag a little bit, and, you know, we have the Tree City USA, the Growth Award, they take care of the diseases, you know, Dutch elm disease after the windstorms, the ice storms, everything else. All the street trees in the city are managed by Dave and not, including the, you know, all the trees in the parks and things like that. So anyway, it's a really big deal in the arboretage culture world for him to get this. And so this is the plaque that they awarded, and it's, it's wood.
It's wood.
So, and they awarded this a little over a week ago, and, but anyway, it seemed fitting tonight since you have the Tree Commission giving their annual report, and he really wanted a picture with the mayor and the chair of the commission in masks for his scrapbook. So, Dave.
Yay! I gotta say something about David and the Tree Commission, and when I, when I found out about it, I called Dave up and told him, because I was absolutely, it's really a big deal, really an honor to have that happen. Here, David, in our little old town, in these other cities, a lot of them have, the only thing that he'd do is an arborist.
Barry, you're gonna have to speak into the mic, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I thought I had a booming enough voice that everybody could hear me, okay, Gary, but anyway, for those cities that have an arborist, and that's all that they do is an arborist, and Dave wears many different hats, as being Assistant Park Director, as Dwight said, and he's got a wonderful staff with the Tree Commission, but that's what makes it well for us in our, our very little owned village that we call Moscow, Idaho. That's what makes us unique, and so I was very proud of what they've done. And that's a big deal, don't you think, for all of us? So anyway, Dave?
Thank you very much.
I'll let you continue.
Awesome, thank you. Well, thank you so much for the award. Of course, I'd like to thank Dwight Curtis for the nomination, and our city council, and Mayor Lambert, and our city supervisor, Gary Redner, for the support, and of course, the Pacific Northwest International Society of Arboretage Culture for, for this award. It was a tremendous honor. We've got a, a great community here, and I like to think the trees are a big part of that. So I was very surprised, and this was great. So thank you very much. All right, so Mayor Lambert, members of council, it's my pleasure to introduce Ellis Eifert, who has been with the Moscow Tree Commission since December of 2019. Ellis moved out to Moscow from Mississippi in 2004. He has sporadically lived here since 2011, when he and his family decided to make Moscow their home. He and his family, they have four kids, live in Moscow, great place to raise kids, and the community has to offer. Ellis is an estate planning and business law attorney and owns his own practice, Eifert Law Firm. On the weekends, you'll find him and his family somewhere in the woods, the mountains, or on the river. So with that, I'd like to turn this over to Ellis for our annual Tree Commission Report. So, Ellis?
Welcome, Ellis.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, and congratulations again, Dave. I'm excited to be here to give the annual report. When I moved here a long time ago now, it doesn't feel like a long time ago, but I loved and, and I started learning about the idea of community forests. It was something I just thought was, was really awesome, and I was very struck by, you know, the, the trees here. I grew up in a place that, you know, we had scrubbed pine, and that was about it, so it was pretty cool to come a place with a bunch of deciduous trees. So I'll go ahead and start jumping in here. So this is the mission statement for the Moscow Tree Commission. I'll just read it real fast. The mission or purpose of the Moscow Tree Commission is to plan, establish, and help conduct a comprehensive community forestry program for the city of Moscow. By ensuring safe, healthy trees, the community forestry program will enhance the quality of life for all that live, work, and visit the city of Moscow. I, I think this is a great mission statement. I think it does a good job kind of boiling down the aspects of community forests, you know, public involvement, for the public benefit, and the management of the, of the forest. So that's the mission statement. Whoa, I think we went to... So I think I missed a slide in there. Is it good? Okay. So the structure and duty of the Moscow Tree Commission are, one, the commission is responsible for providing advice to the mayor and to the council as to preservation, protection, and management of the community forest, so trying to, that's a, that's a large part of what we talk about, managing the forest, trying to make the best decisions for that. The commission is also charged to hear appeals from license, certification, or permit applicants who are aggrieved of some action taken pursuant to the procedures set forth in the Moscow City Code. I haven't been involved in that. I don't think we have very many, much of that that happens, you know, thankfully. And then finally, the commission is responsible for developing and implementing educational materials and programs addressing community forestry issues, and we'll talk a little bit about that as well later on in the, in the report. So the team, so our fearless leader is Debbie Kaldick. She's unfortunately not able to be here, which is why I'm here. She's the chair. Mary Jo Hamilton is the vice chair. Pamela Brunsfeld is the secretary, and then there's David Rauk, myself, Daniel Cronin, Janine Lefingwell, and Lauren King. Now, as you notice, it says resign next to Lauren's name. She recently moved outside the city, and that's one of the requirements for being on the Tree Commission, is that you live within city limits. Brandy Sullivan is our council liaison, and David Schott is our staff liaison, and Donna Howard is the administrative assistant. So those are all the people. Moscow's community forest, a green infrastructure. The quote on the screen says, "The physical components of interrelated systems providing commodities and services essential to enable, sustain, or enhance societal living conditions," which obviously was written by an academic. But what that, what that means, I think in layman's term, is the components, the infrastructure that you get from a community forest can provide a lot of benefits to the public and to their community at large. We've got a list of benefits up there. Public health, you know, getting, I think just getting outside and moving, and when you're, is vital to your health, and when you're able to do that in a beautiful area, when you're able to go on the trails, you have the trees next to it, it's, it's, you're more likely to do that. Traffic calming, traffic calming is where there's a specific things that are put in order to slow traffic down. I don't know a whole lot about that, but different routes and things like that, but you can use trees to help with that. Reduces energy demand. We all know if you've got a big maple out in front of your house, you're probably not gonna have to run the air conditioner as much during the summer, which provides an environmental and economic benefit. environmental and economic benefit. Water conservation, storm water mitigation, you know, trees can help with erosion, the foliage can help keep as much storm water that gets into the, into the storm drains and stuff like that. Enhance public space, I mean, that's pretty obvious, you know, in the spring, you get to go to places, there's flowering trees, in the summer, there's shade, in the autumn, there's fall foliage. I don't know what you'd do in the winter, actually, I'm trying to think of that, maybe hide behind a tree if you're playing snowball. I don't know. Something like that. But, it enhances the public spaces. Urban wildlife, I personally like that, because I think that's cool. We live on East 7th, close to downtown, and I've seen deer in the yard across from us. We had, we had two moose in our backyard a couple of years ago, I don't know if you guys remember when the moose came into town and were running around, they showed up in our backyard. I barely caught my son from going outside to try and catch them, but, so, urban wildlife, and then enhance business, increase property values. All of these benefits listed up there, I think, kind of helped this, because increased property value is a reflection of the desirability of a place to live. And I think if these can help that, it's just gonna help that, then increase the property value. So, that's the green infrastructure, that's, you know, those are some of the benefits of the community forests that we're trying to manage. We had Arbor Day this year, which was awesome, because as we all know, today, this year was kind of a little weird, things weren't happening, but we still were able to make it happen. Mayor Lambert read the proclamation on October 6th, and then we planted an apple guild on October 9th, which was a lot of fun, we had members of the Tree Commission there, I was able to go help, which was awesome. Core development team member, Brandy was there, city staff, Dave was kind of running the thing. It was, it was awesome, and we got some apple trees and some other plants, I think chia, I can't remember all the plants, but we got a bunch of plants planted, so, it was great, we had a lot of fun. Also, for the 27th year, the city of Moscow received the Tree City USA status. So, what that requires is, it has a tree board or department, so the Moscow Tree Commission fills that. Tree Care Ordinance, in the city code, it's Title 5, Chapter 8, so we've got a Tree Care Ordinance in the city code. Community forestry program with at least $2 per capita, which we have, it has to be at least $2 per person. Arbor Day observance and proclamation, which we did that for this year as well. So, for the 27th year, we've gotten the Tree City USA status. We also received a Growth Award for the 20th year. I don't know as much about the Growth Award, I know that it's based on points, you have to get 10 points, I believe, and you can get points based off of participation and execution of eligible activities. So, Tree City USA and the Growth Award, which is fantastic. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me, I know it's like trying to remember a question later on. Public outreach, so we sent out a flyer this year on September, so the first time, and the inaugural flyer was about the benefits of trees. So, some of the things we talked about earlier, about the benefits of the green infrastructure, we, we talked about in there. It was great, it was informative, I think it was, it was a great flyer. Going forward, we, this is the lead commission for Harvest Parts, we've got a work group that's, that's involved with Harvest Park. Another thing we're talking about is sound tree pruning practices, trying to provide resources, education, things like that, so we can, so you can properly prune your trees in order to, you know, keep them healthy. So, trying to cut down on things like lion's tailing and things like that. Another big project is the Downtown Tree Replacement Plan. We're trying to take a proactive approach to that. Dave could probably talk a bit more about that, but that's another large, another large project that we're working on, so, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to say about that, but, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, those are the things.
I can speak to it after, if there's questions.
Yeah, so that's, that's what we've got going on right now, and that's what we're hoping to deal with in the future. So, yeah. So, that's, that's my quick report. Any questions, I can try and answer them.
Well, Ellis, it'd be neat if, if everything goes right here in about five or six months, we'll have an Arborist Day when it normally is in the spring, and that'd be kind of a cool thing, but...
That would be.
Trees are, you know, are a pretty neat thing, and of course, everyone, we do have normal Arborist Days, we get kids involved, and we have seedlings, and people can pick them up and get a chance to plant tree trees and all kinds of stuff, and it's a very, it's always a wonderful Award Day for that very thing, so. Brandy, you're the liaison to that, you got...
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's a great, very knowledgeable and dedicated group. I've enjoyed trying to pick up what I can, just from absorbing what you're all discussing and learning along the way, and very impressive, as with many of the other commissions, realizing how much is accomplished with this group of just citizen volunteers. It's, really enhances the community for everyone, so, thank you.
You reach out to the school kids, I remember the first year I was mayor, David Rauk was, he was the Chair, and he dressed up, and he had cedar boughs all over him, and this was out at West Park School, and so we had first and second graders, and they're all giggling and having a great time. But the whole idea behind that was to teach kids about trees and things, and of course, and I, as a kid, I grew up on a small farm in eastern Oregon, and we had tons of cottonwood trees, we'd climb on, and we played Tarzan, we'd do all kinds of stuff to my poor mother, who's, I don't know how she managed to make it through, us four boys are swinging out and doing all the different things on trees. But anyway, the whole thing about the trees, and getting kids involved in that nature end of it, is the significance and the importance of it, and the understanding and appreciation of it as they grow and they're aging things, you know, as part of the stewardship that we do, so. Anybody have a question or a comment for Ellis and/or Dave on that? Thank you, and congratulations again, David, and thank you all from the Tree Commission. Maureen, has something to say?
Yeah, the board just did, I just...
Good job, let's go. Good job. Okay, well, David gets to hang out with us a little bit, he doesn't always get to have this happen, but he gets, he's number seven as well, acceptance of the Berman Estate land donation, and David, you have got the floor on this one, sir, as well.
Thank you, Mayor Lambert, members of council. So, this is the Berman Estate land donation. The city has been approached by Mr. Graham, a personal representative of the estate of Katrina Berman, and Mr. Norton, who's the attorney for the estate, regarding a gift of land from Mrs. Katrina Berman through her will. The parcel is a .36 acre parcel, right here, and it lies on the western edge of Berman Creekside Park, which is here, it's off Steiner Avenue, and it'll have similar conditions to the .73 acre parcel donated by Mrs. Berman in 1996, which is here. The parcel will be encumbered with a conservation easement to the Palouse Land Trust, and will likely have the following restrictions, one, it'll be encumbered with the conservation easement. The restrictions of note, that'll likely be part of that, is the conservation easement will prevent the property from being subdivided. Construction's really limited to kind of your passive recreation type items, benches passed, trash cans, structure up to 300 square feet, no restroom. Any alteration of the natural lay of the land will just be to construct those more passive recreation type amenities on the property. This is just some pictures, so I'm kind of standing, looking to the south, about in the middle of it. It's this strip here, there's another survey stick up by the bus shelter, if you look to the north, and another survey stick about down here, and so, you're looking at about an additional 32 feet from the existing property. With that, our staff is recommending accepting the Berman Estate land donation, subject to this conservation easement. It really fits with the theme of Berman Creekside Park. The Administrative Committee reviewed this on October 26th, and gave a favorable recommendation for acceptance as well. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or take comments.
Any questions for Dave?
Dave, would you go back to the, to the map, please? Mr. Mayor, if that's all right?
Okay.
I'd like to just make sure, is it just that strip?
Yeah.
That we're talking about, so just that really narrow, darn it, David, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Turzio, I just closed it down, but I'll get it right back up here.
Figures I would do that, and that's why you're just totally done. So, it's that long, narrow strip, kind of in the middle of the big...
Yeah, this is the proposed property, gifted property, right here.
Sweet.
Yep.
Okay.
It's about a 32-foot strip, yep.
Okay, thank you.
That little park down there, it's a kind of a cool little thing, right off our trail too, and people can get out there and play frisbee, and I've rode my bike down there I don't know how many different times, it's really a neat area right through there, and it's really unique for something like this, it'd be perfect. Questions for Dave?
Gina has something else.
Ann? You said, oh, Gina, Gina.
That's the second time you've got me confused with that.
Well, no, I was looking up at Ann, I looked over at Brandy, and I thought she said Ann, so it's Gina, there you go, Gina.
I, I would like to make a motion, that we accept the Berman Estate land donation subject to a conservation easement.
Second.
Second.
Well, Sandra got it. Yep. Gina got, made the motion, and Sandra made the second, to accept the Berman Estate land donation subject to a conservation easement. I'll start the roll with Ann.
Aye.
Brandy?
Aye, and thank you to the Katrina Berman Estate.
Art.
Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Ann, Gina.
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you.
And congratulations on that award again.
Thank you, Mayor Lambert.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number eight, the ordinance amending Title 4, Chapter 3 of the Moscow City Code regarding amendments, the telecommunications code to establish standards for small wireless facilities, in other words, the 5G. Of course, as everyone knows, we had a public hearing on this previously, and so this will be the second time we're hearing this, so, Michael Ray is with us this evening. So, Mike, you have got the podium, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. So, as the mayor introduced, we conducted a public hearing last time, and the council considered the Small Wireless Facilities Ordinance on first reading, and so this is the second reading, and just wanted to provide a brief synopsis where we've been up to this point. As you recall, the existing telecommunications code does not address small wireless facilities, they're really encompassed within other telecommunications within our code. Small wireless facilities are currently permitted without any design standards, so that's really our impetus for the ordinance before you tonight. Taking a look at the proposed ordinance, really defining what a small wireless facility is, and implementing standards for small wireless facilities, and those are applied to new facilities, as well as co-location on existing structures. Three categories of installation, co-location upon existing support structures, the replacement of existing antenna support structures, so for instance, a light pole, replacement with the antenna as well, and then new standalone small wireless facility antenna towers. So, on September 9th of this year, the Planning and Zoning Commission, who's been working on it for about the last year, year and a half, ended up conducting a public hearing upon the proposed ordinance, and recommended approval to City Council with just one minor modification. And then, as I mentioned earlier, on October 19th of this year, the council conducted the public hearing and considered the proposed ordinance on first reading. And staff's recommendation before you tonight is to approve the proposed ordinance on second reading, under suspension of the rules requiring a third reading, and that it be read by title and published by summary. And of course, the council could always consider the ordinance on second reading. And I'd certainly be able to answer any additional questions that you have.
Okay, any questions for Mike from council? Can we bring that down so we can see Ann too as well? Thank you. Okay. Brandy, do you have something?
Yeah, so, we, there was some discussion about this last time, just, just a little bit, adding some preferences for location and configuration, understanding that we can't comfortably, and from a legal sense, require that they be followed, but still wanting to express preferences for the order of those things.
Can you, the order of things, can you tell me exactly where you're looking, are you looking at which you're placing?
So, as far as actually putting an addition in there, in one of the, adding a whereas to express our preferences as a city for location, zone wise, and also configurations. We had some discussion about preferring that they be placed on existing poles versus a new pole, for example, or in some zones over others when possible. So, an expression of the desire for that as a city, that is not enforceable, but still gets that in our document for future councils, if things change in the future, so that they can look back and see what our intent and desires were at this time that we're initially establishing an ordinance addressing this.
Should we have Mia Matisse, our city attorney, is with us this evening. Mia, would you like to comment on that, please?
Good evening. So, Brandy and I did visit about that, and she did submit her proposed policy statement, so, proposed whereas statements for preferences. We did talk about that, that would not be an enforceable, but would just kind of lay out what the council's intent is, in the event that we can at some point in time regulate that, and from a legal standpoint, I don't see any issue with the council, if this is the route you choose to kind of lay out what your intent is, what your preferences are, understanding that we may not be able to enforce that at this point in time, but certainly, just, I think putting people on notice that should, should this ever, where we can regulate this, this is the direction that you would like us to go.
Thank you, Mia.
What's your proposed language, Mia?
Yeah.
It's not my proposed language, it was language that Brandy proposed and submitted to Mike, Ray, and I to review.
Is it in our packet somewhere?
I can answer that. Yeah, it's not in your packet, I have prepared revised ordinances to distribute, as well as I have a couple of slides in my presentation we could take a look at, and these were just based upon Mia, Brandy, and I's conversation about, you know, what occurred at the last city council meeting, and just some potential proposed additions to satisfy kind of those thoughts that the council had at the last meeting. So, I could certainly pull those up and distribute the draft ordinance if you would like.
Mike, why don't you pull it up so we can take a look at it? So, all councilors can just take a view of this and see what it says.
So, the first one was just, like Counselor Sullivan had spoke of, was just looking at more of a preference to the location, and these are just more of configuration preferences, and so this would be added to the recitations, so it would be the, I guess, fifth whereas statement that you can review in your packet. Essentially just saying that, and so this is what we already have, "The number and frequency of small wireless facilities that are needed to create a 5G network. City wishes to encourage the location and co-location of transmission equipment on existing structures in order to reduce visual clutter, promote public safety, and reduce impact to the existing built environment." And then we'd be adding, "The city's configuration preferences are as follows," and then numbering, you know, one through five, first being co-location within existing facilities, so existing facilities within town. Roof mounted would be the second, the third would be mounted on existing utility pole or new utility pole that would be replaced and exist... pole or new utility pole that would be replaced in existing utility pole, the fourth would be building-mounted, and the fifth would be mounted on a new telecommunication tower, so that would just be essentially the new standalone tower. And so those, you know, as our city council would just state these preferences on, you know, the, the facilities that get implemented in town. And then we'd be adding another whereas statement immediately after this, saying that "In consideration of aesthetic impacts of small wireless facilities upon the character of certain areas of the community, city wishes to encourage the prioritization of the location of the facilities based upon the following preferences." And so this speaks to kind of the discussion as to the differences between commercial and residential areas of town. The first preference would be commercial zoning districts, second would be public right-of-way within commercial zoning districts, third would be public right-of-way within residential zoning districts, and the fourth would be residential zoning districts, so mainly private property in residential zoning districts. So, I can...
I have a question about that. Previously, it states there that, let me just get the exact language of it, that the 5G has a higher data and speed, and it also, though, has a shorter range, so if that's the case, we will need to put some in residential zoning districts, but that's our last resort, right?
This is really just stating a policy, so the council's preference as to where they get located, you know, it is recitations, there's, you know, really no teeth to this, it's just making a broad policy statement, you know, speaking to the, our community desires.
Okay, but I want to ask a practical question, that is, I understand we don't have to comply with that, but my question is, will the city need to put or allow in some 5G into residential zoning districts in order to comply with, um, the ordinance?
We certainly will, you know? I, I mean, if we prohibited those, we'd effectively deny service throughout the entire community, which is required, you know, over half the community is residential areas, so we would.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Okay.
And then, then there was just one more addition that we discussed with Brandy, and it was just, I believe it's towards the end of the ordinance.
That red's really hard to read, what it is.
It is, I'll, I'll read it here in a second.
Thanks, Mayor, I thought it was just me.
No, I'll look up, and then, man, I have a tough time.
Looked better before. Uh, it, actually, on page 10 of your ordinance, so this is just, this speaks to kind of the language that was inserted by the Planning and Zoning Commission when they had conducted the public hearing on the ordinance itself, just kind of strengthening this section a little bit. And so what they had added previously was that, you know, when the, these are the required submittals, so documentation by a certified radio frequency engineer, and that's what the commission added, demonstrating compliance with current non-ionizing electromagnetic radiation or radio frequency emission standards as established by the FCC, such documentation may be deferred until prior to issuance of building permit not available at the time of application submittal. And then they added, "Upon the construction of a small wireless facility, city reserves the right to require," and this would be the additions in red that we had discussed with Counselor Sullivan, "annual NIER and RF emissions testing." So we're just reserving the right to do that, not necessarily saying that every provider has to go through that. "As permitted by federal and state regulations," and so a lot of federal and state regulations are likely going to preempt us in, in certain regards, so, including that statement, and that was an addition by Mia, "by a certified radio frequency engineer to verify that the facility is in compliance with FCC standards." And then it goes on to say, "If the facility is found to not be in compliance with FCC standards, the city shall require the facility to be brought into compliance in accordance with the applicable master license agreement." So really just referencing, you know, a lot of the fine details and the legal details are going to be in the master license agreement, and so mainly just stating that that, you know, is going to be handled within that document.
Art, should the city decide to require such examination, who pays for it?
Well, I think that Mia could probably answer that question, you know, the, the FCC regulations are very detailed as far as who pays for it and the process for, for requiring that, and so that was our concern, kind of all along dictating, you know, who, who should pay for that, or stipulating it in our ordinance when there's more detail in FCC regulations.
Yeah, well, let's bring Mia back up so she can comment on that, I mean, she's our attorney.
Um, so, I, I, I did request that the language, if, if the council's going to consider adding this additional language that Counselor Sullivan wants to add, I did request that we added the "as permitted by federal and state regulations." So, within, I mean, the regulations for the RF emissions and certain facilities is quite vast, there are some, um, things, requirements for these companies, for the types of devices used, that we will not be able to regulate or require them to do annual testing and things like that. So the FCC Commission, they handle that, they handle the permitting, the licensing, the certifying of certain facilities and equipment, and so we may not be able to require them to do so. If we on our own dollar want to test the equipment and then submit some sort of that information to the FCC, challenging whether, you know, they should take any additional action with that particular company, related to that device, we certainly could do that, we would bear that expense. But at this point in time, I don't know, I don't feel comfortable with us adding the language that the companies have to pay for any testing when they may not be required to do so per the FCC regulations.
Okay, with that being said, Mia, then, if such a request was made by our city and we paid for it, that still does not mean that the SEC has to deal with it, or the FCC has to deal with it, they can just blow it off if they want, right? They're not by any obligation forced to do anything, is that correct?
Right, yep. We can't force the FCC to do anything.
Federal agency, that's correct, okay, thank you. Uh, okay.
So I would say, I mean, then the way that it's worded, we're not requiring it, we're just reserving that right to do testing with these unknowns in our future.
It doesn't say to do testing, it says reserve the right to require testing, and I think that extends beyond the scope of the city's ability to take action or enforce that. If the city wanted to test it ourselves, I'm sure we could, in our tab, but to require it, require it of whom and who pays for it?
I think that, that Mia has answered the who pays for it thing quite well, that, that we can't require in the ordinance that they pay for it.
Right, but require the test is what I'm hung up on here. So if the city wants to get it done, I suppose we could arrange to have it done on our tab, but within the language of what's proposed here, it says, "require it of, to be tested by somebody else." Well, if we want to do it, we do it, we don't, it's the require thing, reserves the right to require.
How about if we just say, "Reserve the right to complete"?
Conduct would be a better word.
Or conduct, there we go, and just get rid of require.
I think, I think we could probably do that on our own anytime we felt like it.
Without having written in...
Yeah, why, why not put it in there, that, that might, just to make it, to be clear, that, you know, we think at some point in the future, we may think it's valuable to be sure they are in compliance, and we reserve the right to conduct testing, and we may do so on an annual basis.
Well, if we said, "Reserve the right to conduct testing," that's okay, but reserve the right to require.
Right, that's why I was suggesting we just get rid of require, and instead say, "Reserve the right to conduct."
Which would be fine.
Let's, Mia, what do you think of that?
I think that would be fine.
Want to give another copy of that?
Yeah.
Mike, which one of those sections was it under?
Oh, it's on page 10, Your Honor, 11.
Okay, that, the right to require, so the require would be struck out, is that correct?
And actually, what's interesting about that is that word was in there in the original draft ordinance, that's not an addition, correct? I think the addition was just the word annual, but...
Correct, yeah, correct.
Yeah, so require was there before, but if we feel it shouldn't be, we can...
And so, "Upon the construction of a small wireless facility, the city reserves the right to annual near and RF emissions testing."
To conduct.
The right to conduct annual.
Yep, conduct. Conduct is replaced in require, then.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Did everybody see, get a chance to see that? Yep, "Upon the construction of a small wireless facility, the city reserves the right to conduct annual near and RF emissions testing," and it goes on, "as per permitted by federal and state regulations by a certified blah, 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 radio frequency engineer," and on and on.
Yep. So, otherwise, within the wherazes, I don't have any trouble at all with the first whereas regarding the location of facilities and the preferences for where the facility should be located. I have other, I don't care much for the second wherazes with the prioritization of zones, because I don't think there's any good articulation or defensible language that could be included there to say why we are thinking that we want it, that we have preferences for zones. Because preferencing zones, I know it doesn't have any teeth, but what's the defensible thought behind this order of requirement?
You're talking about that, I had number one.
Yeah, it's on page one, the very bottom.
Commercial zoning districts is what you're talking about.
Yeah, commercial, public right-of-ways, blah, blah, blah. We have to have something behind, why do we prefer this over that?
Sorry, where's the...
It's the bottom of page one.
Very first page.
Very first page, down at the bottom.
So I think it's, it's part of that whereas, "In consideration of the aesthetic impacts upon the character of certain areas of the community," that's the reason.
Aesthetics are so subjective, though, that the aesthetics, for one, maybe somebody values the aesthetics of the commercial zoning districts over the residential.
Well, I guess that's the question, is if, if you don't have a preference for them to be in commercial over residential, then you would not, uh, I would see why you wouldn't agree with us, but that's what I think is preferential when you consider the aesthetics and neighborhood and historic and other things. So I would like to include in it, it's non-enforceable, we don't have to justify it other than how it is already stated there, that for aesthetic reasons, these are the preferences.
Yeah, I think it just adds a layer of debatable complexity that just muddies the water, and I don't see the need to have that at all, because everybody's aesthetic is different, and anytime you try to legislate aesthetics, you wind up in hot water. So, I don't know, one of the lawyers can help me out here, but Justice Stewart or something talking about pornography is, you can't define it, but you sure know it when you see it, and it's all a matter of personal judgment, and the same thing goes for, for this, and I don't see the aesthetics of one zone over another being a defensible aspiration for the city to include, even as a whereas.
Um, so, just a couple things, um, and we'll start with that second whereas that we were just talking about, where we're talking about listing the aesthetics part. I don't want to thumb wrestle over it, I don't have a lot of strong feelings, but I feel like they're going to put them up where they need to go, and so I feel like we're battling kind of over nothing on that part. If it's near and dear to someone's heart, I'm fine with that, right, but I really feel that has absolutely nothing to do with when 5G comes in to, to put it in, so, that really, to me, that's neither here nor there. And oddly, the part that I don't like on here are the listings of, the, the first whereas on where to put things, and I guess that comes back to aesthetics for me, because I really don't like roof-mounted things. I would love to have that at the very bottom, and mounted on an existing utility pole, I think that would be great. Building-mounted, that also is some issue, I'd love to have that at the lower end of the priority, I mean, it is there, but there are some really beautiful buildings that are mounted on there, so even though it has no teeth, if we were putting a preference and people had to make a decision, I would certainly want roof-mounted and building-mounted at the very bottom, just because in my personal world, which is truly daffy, I understand that, but those are the things that really stand out to me that I don't like, so, I don't want to quibble a whole lot, but I, it does kind of go back to what Art was saying in terms of one's person's beauty is another person's ugly, and we could really get ourselves into a lot of unnecessary arguments, especially on something that doesn't have teeth, so, again, if it's near and dear to someone's heart, I can, I can live with it, it's not, I don't want to go to spend five hours debating it, but I do think there's some issues here, and to spend time talking about these issues and doing a chess match over it when it doesn't have teeth, I just think we also want to be smart about that.
I appreciate that perspective. The way that I see it, I like that it addresses basically an overall preference for trying to add to existing infrastructure rather than creating new infrastructure, and I see both of those wherazes addressing that as a preference. If we have co-location as an option, then that's ideal, and I like what it expresses in saying that, as again, as a preference, right, not as a regulation, which we can't do in that area.
I understand, but I, I hear what Sandra's saying in terms of, is number three, should number three actually be number two? And that seems to me to make a little more sense in order of prioritization, if it's going to go in there, putting on an existing utility pole or where existing utility pole is makes the most sense versus roof-mounted.
I agree with that.
Um, and, and, and so, I can, I'm still kind of lost about what a building-mounted looks like, is, are they, what is that, I mean, just plop it on the side of a building?
It, it would just be, yeah, mounted to the side, roof-mounted is the very top of the structure, building-mounted would be the side, I mean, the issue you're going to run into with a roof-mounted is, like we discussed before, there's only a certain range, and it's limited, so once you end up, you know, getting above a certain height, they're going to be ineffective. So you're, you're likely not going to run into a whole lot of roof-mounted structures.
Okay, so would you do, based on that, can you actually give me a priority in terms of the value of each one of those? I mean, I, I think one and two are, if you actually move three, three to number two, those are pretty easy for me, and then I get kind of lost after that. Does it make any sense to you, the other three?
Well, I think they do, I mean, you could certainly interchange roof-mounted and mounted on an existing utility pole. I mean, these were similar to some of the other jurisdictions' preferences, like Mill Valley, and so we reviewed those, and that's kind of how we came up with this, this list here. And so, yeah, I mean, certainly co-location is the top priority, anytime we already have facilities and we can co-locate on those existing facilities, that's really the, you know, intent of our code. Roof-mounted, like I mentioned, you're, you're likely not going to get a whole lot of small-cell telecommunications services on top of roofs, just because of the limited range, but certainly, yeah, mounted on existing utility poles, you know, there's already the facilities there, so we are just trying to co-locate a lot of these facilities, so that certainly could be moved up. Building-mounted, I, I think that that would take precedent over mounted, mounting of a new telecommunications tower, I mean, I think just mounted to the side with just minimal equipment is better than a new standalone tower, so I, I think that that would be the only thing I'd change.
So one of the questions I have on that is, are you making those decisions based on aesthetics, are they about a range that some can, can have? Because I'm a little concerned about putting it on something that decreases the range, so that you have to have more of them.
I think it's just aesthetics and impact to the, to the, you know, to the area.
Okay.
And, and I think if I'm understanding this correctly, I mean, as individual companies come forward with their proposals, this is guidance, but it is, the city staff will be looking at it and the impacts and working with them, we're not going to be considering each one of these and going through all of this, I mean, that's going to be up to city staff, this is just sort of a guiding document, those recitations, but you will know in this situation, this particular thing is actually less aesthetically impactful, even though it might not follow the same overall... impactful, even though it might not follow the same overall guidance. I mean, I don't think we will be involved with all those individual decisions.
Since you're the ones that actually made the proposal, would you live with the idea too?
Gina's got a point.
Sure.
Okay.
I'm afraid that I am continually falling on the, on the statements earlier made by Counselor Kelly and Counselor Bedecky, in that while these are, it feels like a wish list, and it feels a little bit still like we don't want it near houses because there could be some health issues, which, right or wrong, we, we can't regulate, I think that we could, I mean, we're already spending fifteen, twenty minutes talking about the order of these things, and, and I, I still don't agree. So, I, I, I feel like for a bunch, or, or for, for the bulk of what has been added to this, that I can, I can tell, I agree with, I think these two whereas's are, are deal breakers for me, because they are squishy aesthetic statements, and, and just as Counselor Sullivan just said, city staff is going to be making these, making these decisions and dealing straightforward, straight with the, with the companies that come in, I just don't, I, I, I don't support these added in.
And we did, did hear from the attorney that she didn't have any problems with these being added as recitations, but just...
That doesn't change my opinion.
Well, that's, that's very true, Brandy, but the city attorney isn't voting on it either. It's amongst the council up here who's going to be making decisions on these whereas's, if they are going to be included or if they're not going to be included.
Well, I, I think with the, hearing the discussion about the first whereas, I'm fine with moving, that's what Maureen was just asking, to the number two and three, after hearing what Mike had to say also, and switching the order of those two. So, probably no surprise, but did you want to say something?
I had a question for Mike on those.
Yeah.
And so, the question I have is, on the first whereas that got added there, Mike, when we express a preference in order and you get that, what, what, how do you receive that, and do you think that that will help direct, or do you feel obligated to direct the placement of these 5G in various places?
Well, any type of work we're doing, you know, whether it's daylighting Hog Creek, we know the council's policy, and we try to work with whoever the applicant is in order to follow through with council's policy, and so certainly, you know, when we're having those discussions with the telecommunications providers, you know, that's something that we would certainly discuss with them, is the, the council's policy on preference of location of those facilities, and we would, you know, do the best that we possibly can to try to meet that preference.
Your honor, if I might?
Yep, Bill, Bill, now wants the floor, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, just, I did want to clarify with the council that, that having these statements as a recitation, city staff will have no authority to, to direct the placement based on these criteria, and I would not expect in the future, you know, the code gets codified, that's what's in the city code, that's what future planners are going to look at, they're not going to pull up the ordinance that was passed five years ago and look at the recitation statement. So, I would not want the council to rely upon recitation and expect that staff is going to implement that as if it is codified in the ordinance itself. I think as it was introduced early on, as articulated in the council's goal for potential future opportunities to regulate the placement of these facilities is appropriate, and the council can look back on these statements in the future, but I don't want to commit staff to enforcing or trying to implement a recitation statement. So, I just wanted to clarify the distinction between what ends up in the ordinance is codified and enforceable, and then kind of an intent statement that staff will have no authority to, to implement.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? So, the, the one out of all the proposed language changes, the one that is most actionable would be the, the possible testing, right? And so, when I'm looking at it anyways, how does that factor into what you just shared with us, Bill?
So, it's most actionable because it's specified in the, in the code section, but we don't know whether we have the authority to require that testing, or I guess, as it has now been amended, for us to conduct testing ourselves. I mean, all we're saying is, we can test it ourselves, and, and that's clearly, the city has the authority to do that, and will probably have the authority to do that under the master license agreement. Whether that testing can result in any, any outcome is going to be dependent upon the FCC.
Thank you.
But anything that's in the recitation is just, is just setting the stage, is telling the stories, providing the background, but nothing in the recitations is enforceable, and so staff will not be able to do that, and staff will, you know, within a year or two, we won't be looking at recitation statements, we'll be looking at the city code as it has been adopted by the city council. So, I just want to make sure the, the council is clear on that.
Thank you, Bill. Maureen, you had your hand, and then I'm going to go to Gary.
So, I, I just want to make one clarification. I think the, I understood Mia saying there's nothing that's unenforceable or illegal about any of the, the proposed changes, but she had nothing on the policy aspect of it. It was more like from a legal perspective, not for preference of council, correct?
Well, let's let Mia address that. Mia, you want to address that, please?
Maureen, I'm not sure I understood your question, I'm sorry.
I think I can answer it.
Thank you.
Okay, Gary.
The recitation statements, as Bill indicated, commonly called whereas statements, only provide a background for the council's decision-making. If you recall, the, a statement of policy is done by council resolution. That is something the council puts out there as saying, this is our policy, and when a decision is made, we intend to follow this policy. A recitation merely provides background. You might call it legislative intent or something like that, but it is, it's not enforceable because it's not part of the ordinance, it's just part of the background.
So, what you're saying is, it's just there to make people feel good?
Well, it can, it can provide some background, but yeah, if you recall the resolution that extended the public health emergency order, there were three pages of recitations in there, because it provided a systematic, historical perspective of how the council came to this statement and policy. But recitations are not statements of council policy.
Okay, all right, okay.
Did that answer your question, Maureen?
Yeah, I just, I, I thought you'd said a statement that Mia approved this, and I wanted to be clear about what it was. When you'd said that, I, I got caught off guard thinking, I'm not sure Mia said she approved it from a policy perspective, but she approved it from a legal perspective, and all I was doing is making that distinction, that we were making policy, and all she did is say, there's nothing illegal about what you're saying.
Okay.
Separating those two.
Yeah.
Okay, so where do we want to go, folks?
Well, I'm with Gina on this one, and I'd like to ditch both of those whereas's and substitute the word conduct for require in the ordinance itself, and with those, I would be good to go with this.
I would as well.
And, and adopt the, the other additional language at the end?
Yeah, just not the two whereas's that have the list in them.
Yeah, just losing the whereas's and then substitute the word conduct for require.
Do you want to make a motion, Anna?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance on the second reading under suspension of the rules requiring a third reading, and that be read by title and published by summary, with the one adjustment on page ten, deleting the word require and substituting the word conduct.
Second, I have a question about that motion, Art, because there was other additional language on page ten. Are you wanting to include that or no in your motion?
Yeah, I would include the other language on page ten.
The, the added?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so the, the motion is to approve the proposed ordinance on the second reading under the suspension of the rules requiring a third reading, and that be read and titled by title and published by summary, with getting rid of the two whereas's and substituting the word conduct for require on page ten, let the other wording stand as it is, correct?
Indeed.
Okay, is everybody, is anybody, any comment on that before I call for a roll?
Well, I want to amend the motion, but I guess that doesn't make sense. I want to have a chance to vote on including the whereas's, and I don't know if that can happen.
Vote against the, you don't want to vote against the motion.
All right.
Anne, did you have any comments before we get going? Is Anne listening?
Yeah, she froze a little bit.
Nope, she blinked.
She's stuck in between a thing.
Are you talking to me?
Did, did you hear what I said, Anne?
I just, it's low for a moment. If I'm tracking correctly, Art made a motion, Gina seconded it, was there anything else that I missed?
Yeah, the two whereas's would be eliminated.
Mm-hmm, that the rest of the language, everything else would be included, with just the one word swapped out.
Yeah, conduct would go into where that, instead of having require, would be conduct, that word on page ten, all the other wording would stay in.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, Anne, I'll start the roll with you.
Sorry, I'm a little torn, I mean, I, I would like to include those, I think that that preferential language is...
So, I, I had just asked, I had just asked how, what if I want to include those, and
Well, the motion's made, if you don't...
Vote on this motion, and we see what happens.
If you don't care for the motion, you can oppose it.
Nay.
Okay, Brandy.
No.
Okay, Art.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
And Maureen.
Nay.
Okay, so that's a three to three tie, three yays, three nays, and the mayor votes yes. So, the reading passes to approve the proposed ordinance on the second reading and the suspension of the rules requiring a third reading, and that'd be read by title and published by summary, eliminating those two whereas's and switching the word conduct, or require to conduct.
Actually, your honor, you can't waive the readings, it takes a super majority of the council, so four positive council votes, it can be considered on second reading. So, if you vote for it, then it's to be considered on second reading, and it will come back to council at the next council meeting.
Okay, so it comes back in two weeks for a third reading.
Can I, Mr. Mayor? May I make a comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to commend Mike and Mia, and they both reached out to me last week after the previous meeting that we discussed this at, and Brandy as well for looking into this and being responsive to those questions and having a couple of conversations with me, and then as well as you all for being willing to discuss this again tonight. So, thank you, I really appreciate that, and I think that whatever ordinance we end up with is going to be reflective of, of that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne, we'll see it again in two weeks. With that, we'll move on to item number nine, which is stormwater update by Kyle Steele. Kyle must be here with us somewhere.
The Mountain Virtual World, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm excited to be here tonight to discuss the issue of stormwater management in the city of Moscow. It's been a while since we talked about this, the last time, which was at your council workshop in February of this year. So, just a little bit of background, the city received a Phase Two stormwater permit from the United States Environmental Protection Agency, which became effective last October first, 2019. The permit is effective for five years. The, the permit requires the city to develop a comprehensive stormwater management program and implement a number of control measures, which you'll hear about a little bit later in a video that we've produced, that are aimed to improve the quality of stormwater that we, that's not only discharged into our storm sewer system that the city owns and operates, but ultimately to the local receiving water bodies that receive our, our, that discharge. As I mentioned, we held a council workshop back in February, prior to the COVID pandemic, at which time we went through the findings of a user fee study that we had been working on for a number of years with our consultant, Aspect Consulting, out of Yakima, Washington. The direction and plan following that workshop was for staff to bring back a enabling ordinance to council last spring, and possibly begin to start assessing fees to fund the, the program this October. But due to the harsh realities of the pandemic and the economic uncertainty, you know, what we saw in, in, started to see in, in March, the mayor and council decided to delay the implementation of that funding mechanism until 2021, possibly, October of 2021, possibly. Since that time, staff have been busy with ongoing routine operations and maintenance of the storm sewer system. We've enhanced our sweets, street sweeping activities, we've, we've been conducting a lot of construction reviews and inspections throughout the pandemic, developing educational plans, and one thing I wanted to point out, as the council may recall, the permit contains a number of stipulated timelines for us to implement these control measures, and so it's not like, okay, starting October first, we have to implement everything. So, over the, over the life of the, of the five-year permit term, we have a number of provisions that we have to meet throughout that. As of October first of this year, we were legally required to start the implementation of a public education outreach plan, which we, we have done. We've developed seven unique stormwater lesson plans that we plan to roll out into the school district over the next year. But our, our plan moving forward over the next few months is really to start conducting a lot of, of public outreach with the various stakeholders throughout the community, a lot of the large landowners, as we ramp up toward the potential formation of a stormwater user fee utility next year. As part of that plan, a public work staff, along with these, or with assistance of Dave Harland, our, our digital media specialist and administration, developed an educational video that we plan to put on our, our website here in the next couple of weeks. And so, what we'd like to do tonight is to premiere that video for you and those watching in the audience. Hopefully, that helps address any kind of questions that you have and the public may have in the future, and then I would stand for any questions right now and then also follow in the video. So, with that, I think David's going to play the video.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Red carpet. If I can get back to the, back to the video. It's here somewhere. Yes. Sorry, folks. Red X's.
It's only, I think it's only sixty minutes long, so it's...
He already has popcorn for us all.
Yeah, I'll go get it. Sorry. There it is. Okay, hold on. Now I have to share it. And it's not got sound.
Not agreed there, Gary.
Do my best work, or nobody can hear me.
Hmm. It's working earlier. This is my whole day. Sorry.
You had sound earlier, didn't you?
Yeah, it was working.
You can just tell us what you said.
Is that a tiny little microphone down on the bottom, right?
Is that a tiny little microphone down on the bottom right, like next to, or yeah, down there? Or the little loudness thing too, to the right of it?
Well, sorry, guys.
God, it's just a teaser now.
Dave did start that earlier tonight.
It worked earlier.
About half an hour before the meeting, it was working, so.
Let me try something else. I really apologize, folks.
Don't worry about it.
Yeah, really.
It's 2020, you're good.
Try to be a mute button somewhere. It's not working.
One more time. Nope.
There's a mute way over there to the left. How about that one? Yeah. Yeah, that, yeah, it's on, so.
What about the little, next to the 831 in the bottom right, the little megaphone thingy, like right there? Does that do anything? No, okay. Forgive me. I don't know what I'm talking about.
That was a good stab.
It was a good try.
What else? You gotta, looking for anything, any little icon you can push.
Uh, I'm sorry, folks. I don't know what to do.
Can we take this up at the meeting?
We'll have a second showing.
Is there a time-sensitive thing here? Can we take it up at the next meeting?
David, could we put this out on, just send a link out?
Sure.
And that way council could preview it before it gets released.
Yep, absolutely.
Perfect.
How's that, Kyle? Well, Dave will send a link out to all of us so that we've got it.
And we can view it.
Yeah, and just, just one additional thing. We, we are in the process of developing a stormwater-specific webpage that summarizes a lot of, a lot of what's contained in the video, as well as a few of the related documents. And so that'll be up pretty soon.
But the question is, if you're going to put this, are you just wanting for us to approve the video?
No, it's, no, it's, all it is is a view. There's no action on this, Maureen, tonight. But one thing I will say, you had, Kyle, you had hit it earlier, the stormwater utility that we talked about originally, we were implementing this year, and we waited, we put it off for one year because of the COVID. And so that's going to be coming forward to us as we're going along into the next budget year, the 21 budget year.
Yeah, and really, the purpose of the video is to, is to provide the background of, you know, what's, what's a municipal separate storm sewer system, you know, that's what we own. You know, what, you know, the physical infrastructure that we have in place, what are we doing now? What did we identify during our fee study? And to talk about the next steps going forward and, and to really try to summarize that in a, in a, in a manner that's easily to digest for our citizenry, so.
Yeah, if I may.
Okay, Gary.
David did a really nice job of laying this video out, and it was intended for the council to see what will go out to the public as an introduction. It covers all the aspects. Certainly, there's, as Kyle indicated, there's individual lessons that will amplify it, but it gives a great overview, and it was worth it. I thought it was worth a thousand words just to sit there and see how it all fits together. So sorry, we couldn't play that for you tonight, but I think you'll be impressed when you see it.
Yeah, I just didn't want to hold up Kyle and any of the work in the development of the webpage.
Well, okay, thank you, Kyle. We'll move on to item number 10 then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Proposal to develop plan to address the potential for gender-neutral bathroom, restroom conversion. We got Jen Pivner with us to save it. Hi, Jen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are you? I am going to attempt to share my screen. And we'll see how that goes there. Is that my PowerPoint for everyone to see?
Yep, it's up.
Wonderful. So this is, yeah, it's a proposal to put together a plan based on some general feedback that, if I can get it to advance, here we go. Some information that the mayor had received from some citizens and then also from the Human Rights Commission. And what we did at the mayor's request is take a look at just some preliminary research to see what this might involve. Should we look at putting together a plan? We took on a review of gender-neutral restrooms in Idaho. We looked at 10, 10 to 12 different cities to see if they had made a transition to gender-neutral restrooms, what that looked like, what was their basis for doing that. We did an inventory of our existing city of Moscow facilities. And then one of the things that we thought was important, if planning should advance, what are the other considerations that we need to think about in putting together that plan? So that was some of the, that was the preliminary research that was done, and I'll give you an overview of that here. Of the cities that were surveyed in Idaho, and many thanks to Taylor, our executive assistant, for helping us pull this information together. She was tremendous with that. Caldwell was one of the cities that we asked, just how many facilities you have, where they are. Were they built specifically for that purpose or were they converted? Is there a policy that that change was made based upon? And then any public input and any future plans. Caldwell was the first one, and they haven't done anything in the gender-neutral or even what we're calling family-user or multi-user type restrooms. We did have quite a few of the comparison cities that focused on a multi-user or a family-user concept. And that's, as you see here, Spokane, Pullman, Nampa, Pocatello, Lewiston, and Meridian. Parks and Rec Centers seem to be places where these are most popular. A lot of these were either purpose, or all of them were purpose-built or existing. A lot of these, you'll see existing private, for instance. We'll talk about that in a minute, as those are the easiest to convert and, and make it much simpler to make that process move forward. Purpose-built is great. We'll also see on the next slide some specifically purpose-built with significant more intention than our family or our multi-user group here. No real public input or future plans except for from Spokane. They noted that the requests for family are higher, and they do have more plans for family restrooms or multi-user, but they're not necessarily focusing on gender-neutral. Two of the comparison cities that were focused more specifically on gender-neutral, this is Boise in Idaho Falls. Boise does take the lead in moving towards specific gender-neutral facilities. And I should make the note, in the top right of the slides here are the different signs you would see at these facilities. So this is ones, this is the category where we would see those all-gender restrooms or gender-neutral restroom-type signage. Boise is doing a purpose-built across the board. It sounds like they've got quite a new, a few new facilities that are coming online. Their policy that they rely upon is their nondiscrimination clause in their ordinance. That's both for Boise and Idaho Falls. And the public input that they've gotten, Boise says none on gender-neutral, but they're getting great response from families. And their goal is to have gender-neutral in all facilities. And then Idaho Falls, they can own public input in particular, but they're certainly looking at future plans to have those gender-neutral facilities or family facilities. They do have a blend. So the policy statements that Boise and Idaho Falls have are very similar to the city of Moscow's nondiscrimination ordinance. And I just put the snippets that they refer to in their emails and their information shared with Taylor regarding the survey of the communities. And then I also have Moscow's, which I think is important to see in this as well, because we are along the same lines. There's a lot of, the nondiscrimination clauses are out there, but between Boise and Idaho Falls, they're saying that these are the ones that speak to their planning for gender-neutral and multi-use facilities. So we do have that piece in place already. As far as a facility inventory, we do have, we broke it down into different groups. We have our parks. We have parks portables. The parks portables are the porta restrooms that come in. Actually, we take them in some places out in the winter, bring them back in the summer. Those are all, they may not be signed gender-neutral, but they are multi-user, certainly. And so those, that block, we feel like we have a pretty decent handle on for the meantime. As new facilities would come online, it's important to note that as we look at this plan, we could consider what those new facilities would look like. And I'll hop over to the right hand of the slide, right, right-hand side of the slide. Under city occupied facilities, we have annex/haddock building. We wouldn't be making any proposals for the annex, but this may be information that we could refer to when we move into the haddock, other facilities like that down the road. So if I step back to parks, we've got about half of our parks have restroom facilities that aren't portable. And then the city occupied facilities, these are buildings that we own and that we occupy. Then we've got city-owned facilities. These may, or these are buildings or properties that we own, but we don't necessarily occupy ourselves. So that's what our inventory looks like at this point. Now, when we look at the overview of the types of facilities in those buildings or in parks, our portables, we have those nine seasonal. What we look at for those single-user facilities, those that we kind of consider the lowest fruit on the tree that we could probably work with is locks and signs. These are primarily single-user facilities that we could either change lock types on them or they probably already have locks on them. Would be signage update for those. And then our blended options, City Hall is probably the best example we have of a blended option. So we have a larger building. We have six facilities within City Hall, three for male, three for female at this point. We could do gender-neutral on maybe the second floor where we have most of our public business. We could keep our third floor and our first floor gender-specific, but we'd have different options there for what might be the best way to make the best use of the facility we have in place. And then there's the category for additional considerations. This is the smallest piece of the pie at about 5% of all our facilities. But these are the ones that would take the most significant amount of planning. It could be some amount of construction or remodeling, something along those lines. These are facilities that, at this time, are gender-specific, of course. They may have six toilets in the female side, for instance. And there may be some considerations for how we could make sure that we still have, if there are six in the female and six on the male, how we still have six available to whoever decides to use that facility without having to put a lock on the front door and changing it to a single user. So we'd have to spend some quality time looking at how we could do that. Those ones are the, again, additional considerations that will take more planning and, and work to get through. But for the most part, we could, we could do some, some significant changes to the most of our facilities in short run. If those additional considerations, if that percentage was much higher, that would be a significant consideration as we move forward. And then those user considerations, some of the things that came up in our discussions was public access, employee access, accessibility across the board, regardless of gender, and then available fixtures, excuse me, fixtures. It's a blended option. Is it an additional consideration? How much adjustment or change or remodel would be required to meet the needs that we're looking for or meet the requirements that we're trying to establish for ourselves? Safety is a big concern. Police Chief James Frye, he's already reached out to the Idaho Chiefs of Police Association. There's no negative issues reported across the state from that association, which is great. Chief Frye also has been involved with some of the FBI training, and he's got a good network there. So he's reaching out to see if there's anything else kind of in the, in the bigger world there that we'd want to be mindful of when it comes to safety. And then specifically user groups. If it's a building we own, but we don't necessarily occupy, we want to work with the tenants of that building, everywhere from, you know, 1912 Center down to the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department. One note I have here is the Human Rights Commission would be a great sounding board for plans as we move forward as well, so. Especially as some of these suggestions came from them, we'd want to circle back and, and talk with them as well. So in short, there's, you know, three major areas that we looked at. These are the basics that we've found. And just looking for council direction if we want to move forward with preparing a plan for potential council consideration down the road.
Jen, a question, a couple of small questions, or they may be big questions. But the safety concern, you said you had talked to Chief Frye, and Chief Frye has checked through other municipalities in Idaho and have not discovered any issues for safety. And I think that needs to even be a little bit broader. You had Spokane up there. I think that it needs to be kind of in a circling area of the Northwest to see if there's any, any issues of criminal activity or whatever, because safety is a concern. The other concern for me is expense of changing all the bathrooms. I think, you know, I like the idea of having a plan. I think there's some that could be easily done and others that maybe we don't want to do because of the expense for it. And of course, as we come along with new bathrooms, as we're, they're being constructed and built, that's an easy thing to do because things can be taken care of at the time of construction. But I think those should be things that are wrapped up in this too. So, questions from the council or for Jen? Maureen.
Okay, so I fully support the idea of creating a plan and to start working towards creating, I don't know what word you want to use, single-use, gender-neutral, family-friendly, male restroom. I, I think I would like to figure out what name we would call them. And in part, I think the idea, if we can get the most generic name that makes everyone feel like they're welcome and that there's an advantage to a lot of people with respect to those bathrooms, would be the best from my perspective. The other big question for me is the concept of conversion. And so I think that if you can make a single, single-stall bathroom, what was it, gender-neutral or, you know, all persons, that's great. I guess I always still think, I have a question in my own mind about safety, are people getting beat up? But the question is also whether or not the consumer, the person who has to use the bathroom, or the user, actually feels comfortable going into a multi-stall restroom. And I think that there's questions that relate to that, that before we decided to either convert those or creating new ones, I think we have to have a good pulse on what is it that the community and the users really feel about the multi-stall gender-neutral bathrooms.
Okay.
And so did I understand correctly, Jen, that what, those bathrooms that Maureen is talking about are in that 5%, just the three facilities that, is that right?
Yes, so those are examples of the three biggest ones that we have, but those would be the ones that we'd need to take on
Right.
additional considerations. We'd need to work through those, those types of problems, and I'm sure others. Not even problems, but questions. Are they things that we can address and how do we do that? Of course, cost comes into play, as the mayor mentioned as well, so.
Right. It seems that the, the other, the sort of, I like the idea of the phased-in approach and, and kind of moving forward with the ones that are the, the less complex and don't have all those complicated questions about how do people feel about this? And I would like to see moving forward on some of those things that are just changing signage and, and locks and so forth on those, that big, about 50%, I think, that you said.
I also wanted to say, Jen, that the university, the law school, actually converted a lot of theirs over. And I don't know who did it, but they have some all-female bathrooms that have multi-stalls, and all the single ones are all, yeah, everyone that was single just stayed single, but it became open to anyone.
Okay. Art?
Yeah, I'm fully supportive, and I think we should move forward with the, let's step lively, change the signs, make sure the locks. Any of the single-unit bathrooms should be converted as soon as we can get to them. It's the multi-stall ones that are going to be the big issue and the big hand. We're going to spend most of our time and effort trying to figure out what to do with those. But as we plan those, I think we should just go forward with gender neutrality in every place we can possibly do it.
Sandra, you had, did you have something, Sandra, because you were.
It was very similar. I, I think this is something that we absolutely need to do. I think Moscow needs to move forward in this direction. I also think we have to be careful about cost and consideration, unfortunately. But that doesn't mean we can't move forward and do some of this changeover. And certainly, I like that we're talking about direction and planning and that multi-stall question will come up. It's been in many places. Some places it works, some places don't. So Jen, I'm looking forward to seeing what else you come up with. This has been a really great first step. I appreciate it a lot. And I'm looking forward to moving forward and to hearing what else you come up with.
Jen?
I, I agree. I'm going to say ditto to what has all been said. I would encourage some more discovery or discussion about the family idea. And, and maybe it's just. idea, and, and maybe it's just labeling for me, but, you know, I, there may be a entire group of citizens we have not tapped yet who would feel way more comfortable going into a family restroom than a gender neutral restroom. Or, you know, so, so let's, let's continue the conversation. Let's do what we can as far as the low-hanging fruit, but let's be cognizant that there are, we're going to need some public input for sure.
Gary, you had your hand up.
Yeah, with the direction that staff is seeking tonight is that we develop that phased approach. So I'm hearing that council wants to proceed, not go out and just make wholesale changes without coming back and letting you know how that approach is going to take place. So, uh, staff will go ahead, develop that if that's council's direction. Bring it back to administrative committee and we'll implement it as directed.
How does that sound to everybody?
Sounds awesome.
Yep.
Ann, how about you? Okay, Ann said great. Okay, well, I think you got the direction on that, Gary, so we'll move forward with that and we'll be uh looking for uh the development of the phased plan approach, so.
I think that the, Ken is here.
Ken, would you like to speak? Come on up here. Ken, Ken Fons has been patiently sitting here for two hours, so come on up and and he's our Human Rights Commission Chair for, I don't know how many years, years and years, and so go ahead, give us some comments.
Um, yeah, so I, I'm, I'm, thank you, Mayor and City Council, and I, I love, and I'm speaking for the Human Rights Commission here because we're all of one mind. Love that you're going to be looking at this and talking about moving forward, and we realize that some bathrooms are more difficult because there's more expense involved and how you're going to do that, and we understand that, but that you're going to be looking at them, and that's wonderful, and figuring it out, taking care of the easier ones. And um, we think it's extremely important of, goes along with our ordinance, nondiscrimination ordinance. It also, Moscow is an inclusive city, because the way it's set up now with gendered bathrooms everywhere in the city, a segment of our population uh does not feel comfortable using those bathrooms. And it's not just transgender individuals who do not feel comfortable using it, and that's a big part of it. But also um, the family idea, you have a parent with a small child who is uh opposite gender, uh caregivers taking care of somebody who's opposite gender. I mean, there's all kinds of issues here. Uh, and making bathrooms wherever you can gender neutral is a way to help alleviate that, and it makes us much more of an inclusive city. So we're very happy that you're going to be putting a plan together, start looking at the conversion, and we expected you to take care of and hoped you would take care of, of course, the easy ones first. They're quick, they're easy, you get those done, then you start doing more intensive work on converting the multi-stall ones and what you, what needs to be done there. And like I said, cost is a factor, and we understand that. Um, and especially these days, you know, money's tight. Uh, but just the fact that you're working for it, and a bigger thing also to us is that habits part of the city's plan, that any new facilities built already go that direction, and so that when you're building new uh public restrooms, that you keep that gender neutral in mind, that right from the start, and then you're already building them, and so you're not accruing any extra cost here. You're just looking at it a different way. And so if that becomes sort of the city's plan for the future, that's wonderful too. And, you know, we didn't expect you to do it overnight, but the getting started and working on it is great, and so we're very happy that you're moving in that direction. And asking for our, our input, I would be happy to help you give it. We can uh do studies as well to look at all of the information that's out there, because uh there are a lot of cities uh in the Pacific Northwest that have gender neutral bathrooms and have for a while. A lot of universities have gender neutral bathrooms and have for a while, and there's a lot of different options that is covered it. For example, one that has been worked on in some public schools is that you have the sink area, that's a more open area that everybody uses, but then you have a series of stalls, but they're fault solid, full doors with locks, and so you have like eight of those, but everybody then shares the sinks to wash hands. It's in a more open area, so there's no safety concerns, that kind of idea. And a lot of places have done that sort of thing with new facilities. And that seems to have worked really well for those that have used it, so. So anyway, so thank you, everyone, for working on this.
Thank you, Ken, very much. Okay. Well, with that, we will move on to item number eleven, COVID Cares Act update and directions. Uh, Gary Redner is with us this evening. Hi, Gary.
Good evening. If I get Dave to come out here so I can share my screen, I'm not as adept as a Mr. Shot.
I don't know if you want to do this.
Hey, I have all the faith in the world in you.
Is it in presentations? I bet we can hear him this time.
Yeah, you don't get that luxury very often.
Where did I go?
Yeah. City crowd public, there you go. That's it. It's only two slide presentations, so you can come back and fix it after that.
I can do that for me, in here.
Okay, uh, this is my bi-weekly report on uh what is going on with all things COVID. Uh, last uh council meeting, we talked about metrics by which the council uh wanted to develop some yardsticks by which uh we could look at uh the uh COVID situation and how that affected the council's uh current public health emergency ordinance, or excuse me, emergency order, uh which is in effect until January fifth. Uh, social distancing and then mask or, or resolution. So, uh, one of the things that we presented last time is some different metrics that were uh used by our local health district regionally, nationally, and uh even there was a separate one down in Boise. So we're working on those, and you should have gotten an email from me today. Uh, we're proposing having a special council workshop, uh council meeting, actually next Monday after administrative committee at six o'clock uh to talk about this more in depth. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time working on it, except to say that we will have uh some proposals at that time. I've got a mayor council leadership meeting on Wednesday. We'll try to flesh that out a little bit. And I want to run some ideas past Carol Merly down at the uh North Central Health District as well. So, these are some graphs that were put together. Uh, give the credit to Bill Bellnat for uh the graphics. What you're seeing here, the actual bar graphs are the seven-day moving average of COVID, uh confirmed COVID cases in Leittuck County. So the red line is the seven-day moving average. And as you can see, the individual dates, we've had some very high days and then uh some very low days, but you can see some of the trends. The good thing at this point is that we are trending down on the seven-day moving average, so we will see where that goes. I believe we had somewhere around forty-one cases over the weekend. Uh, so that varies up and down as those numbers come in. So that's the report on COVID itself for tonight. Uh, be happy to answer any questions. We're continuing to have uh the sewage testing done through the University of Idaho uh Engineering Department and Biochemistry Lab, I believe. Uh, so we don't have enough data points to really put any trends together yet, but we continue to gather that information, so. Um, we're aware that COVID is in our community, but in order to kind of predict or or graph where we are so we can have expectations if we see another uh incident coming or increase or where it's going, so hopefully we'll be able to uh correlate that a little more, but we don't have enough data at this point for that, so I'll keep the council informed about that. So with that, David, you can go back to, there you go, thank you. Okay, so the next thing is Cares Act. And the Cares Act, as we've reported for several months now, is the program by which uh federal Cares Act funding was provided to the state of Idaho. Um, at one point two-five billion dollars to the state of Idaho. Uh, we were given a population-based allocation, uh back, I believe it was in May, that allotted eight hundred eighty-seven thousand one hundred dollars to the city of Moscow for uh COVID relief uh reimbursements. We then received another uh population-based um public safety reimbursement uh Cares Act allotment of one point six-four million that is separate from the original eight hundred eighty-seven thousand one hundred. Yes, Brandy?
Carrie, I'm sorry. I, I know this and I know that you know this, but I just want to clarify that we didn't, we haven't actually received any of that money. We
Oh, it's a reimbursement, as I said.
Right, and I know you said that, but just, just want to make that clear that.
Yeah, and there's been some misconceptions out there that somehow the council's or the mayor's emergency order and the council's resolution somehow make the city eligible for this funding. That is not in fact correct. Every city in the state of Idaho, every county in the state of Idaho was given a posh, population-based allotment of Cares Act funding. So it has nothing to do with whether you have an emergency order in place or not. So uh this was something that was set down by the governor's office with those Cares Act funds. So the one point six-four million, we're not really talking about today because that was specific, and we talked about that in July and August. You recall that we had amended the appropriation ordinance on at least one occasion because we had to uh calculate up the amount of money that we'd been allotted, and there had to be a commensurate reduction in property taxation. So we amended the L-two property tax certification in order to take advantage of that one point six-four million dollar allotment. So that's not what we're talking about today. That's already been acted on by council. The eight hundred eighty-seven thousand one hundred dollars, however, we've been chipping away at. Uh, we have uh council approved a um twenty thousand dollar mask fitting machine that is currently in the stages of preauthorization by the subcommittee of the coronavirus Financial Advisory Committee uh empowered by the governor. So we've not received the word on that yet. Uh, council also approved approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in computer peripherals and equipment, laptops, so on and so forth, that would enable staff to be able to work remotely. As you know, last week, um, the governor moved us from stage four back to stage three. One of the things that he um mandated, or at least recommended, was that uh anybody who could work remotely, employers would be well-advised to allow them to work remotely. So uh that's one of the things that we're doing. Of course, there's also the idea of uh getting this equipment when everybody wants it is a little tough, so some of it's on back order. So we've been looking at, uh, how can we, uh, what other needs does a city have that are related to um responding to COVID? What could make our employees safer? Uh, specifically first responders and that sort of thing. Uh, we do have approximately seventy thousand dollars in um specific PPE and that sort of thing, hand sanitizer, uh sneeze shields, that sort of thing. Um, that, so as we're putting forward our requests for reimbursement, it's fairly labor-intensive, because the forms that the state has developed, each receipt needs to be entered separately. So our grant staff is working on that. So um, as they are moving forward with that, we're getting reimbursement submitted for those as well. Additionally, we have some time for employees who, if they've been exposed to COVID nineteen or because they have, are required to quarantine or self-isolate, that under the family's first um directives, that um you provide ten days of uh quarantine time, if you will, if someone has been exposed to COVID. Uh, you can be reimbursed for that as well, so we're working on that. However, uh, the biggest need that we have right now is radios for the fire department. As you read in the memo, we have a limited number of radios, uh handheld radios, portable radios, they call them. And um, we have been looking at uh ways to provide uh ways that the first responders did not have to share those radios. And as you know, we have a radio initiative that we're moving forward as um, as we upgrade. However, we still don't have enough of the old radios for our people to not have to share those. So uh as we're looking forward, this is a way for us to uh purchase enough radios so our firefighters and first responders would have radios that they can use, personal use, if you will. When I say, I should say individual use, they're not personal to their own use. Um, so that is something that we can move forward with. I would note that the city of Idaho Falls also, I believe it was Idaho Falls, um, received preauthorization for replacement of radios uh in order that interoperability as well as uh the fact that they did not have to share radios. So uh that is the proposal that we have for you today. I would note that there was some discussion about whether we wanted to move forward with a um assistance to businesses and nonprofits. Uh, we discussed that at the mayor and council leadership meetings over the last, oh, probably month to six weeks. Some cities in Idaho have done that. Uh, Lewiston's got a short-term grant program. Uh, city of Coeur d'Alene had one, has one. Uh, city of Meridian, I believe, also has one. Those are the ones that I'm aware of. Uh, the uh regulations for these, uh, the governor's office put out, I believe it's called the Small Business or Small Municipal Business Grant Program. It's fairly complicated. It's very intensive for staff. Um, and we looked at it, we staffed it probably a month ago when we first started discussing this. I sent out feelers to uh the group, the management group that I'm a part of, and received some responses. City of Lewiston was in the process of trying to determine if they were going to move forward. They ultimately decided that they would. So they have a uh grants manage, or grants coordinator who is heading up a uh review team, and they have, again, a very short window of time that these grants are available. I believe from October nineteenth through December fourth. Uh, so we lack the staff to be able to do that. There are some other complications. I know Brandy's looked into it. There are um some rules on if you have received any of the PPP program or the uh Rebounds Idaho Grants. Uh, you can't, a business can't ask for the same uh thing that they've already sought um aid for, so you're ineligible on that. That doesn't mean there aren't things like PPE that are available above and beyond that. I will note that the definition of PPE under that program, I had Alisa take a look at it again today. And the definition of PPE is not as uh cut and dried as you would think. Uh, PPE refers to personal protective equipment, so sneeze shields, things like that. It's questionable whether those would be uh approved or not. However, be that as it may. As we looked at it, it had more to do with, if you take away the um restrictions under the treasury regulations that um revenue replacement is prohibited. You're not allowed to receive a um dispersment for revenue replacement. So um when we talked about um the nonprofits, for instance, uh not being able to, uh say donations have dropped off, that's revenue. If they had increased expenses, that might be something that we might be able to do. However, uh, as we staffed it, it was, it's too little, too late at this point. Um, the program with all of the attendant management that it would take, we just don't have the resources to do that. So it's the recommendation of staff that we move forward with uh the radios and see if we can obtain reimbursement for that and help our first responders.
Maybe in the past, you've answered this question, but let me ask you again, and that is, were we able to use any of this, under the cares funds, to pay for the overtime our police officers have had to work?
That's interesting, because the way the Cares Act is written and under the treasury regulations, and as I've indicated before, uh, it's the Office of the Inspector General of Treasury that is in charge with, is charged with enforcing these sorts of things under the Cares Act. Um, and one of the, the, the regulations state, and they do it through the Office of the Inspector General, then they have frequently asked questions. then they have frequently asked questions, which is really odd. Typically, when you have a federal entity, they usually have, that's why we have a code of federal regulations. So they issue the regulations under which you can take advantage of the programs. In this case, they decided to come out with frequently asked questions, which don't give you the hard and fast rules that you would like. The police overtime, overtime that was for the last fiscal year was previously budgeted in the 2020 budget. We did not exceed that appropriation. And under that Treasury regulation, that would be revenue, or if it was funded under the most recently passed budget, then it is not eligible for Cares Act funding. So I know one of the first things council asked when we first started this was, well, we're gonna see our utilities drop off because we are not collecting past due accounts and those sorts of things. Can we use that? And that was prohibited under the Cares Act. You're not allowed for revenue replacement. I hope that answers your question, Maureen.
It does.
Okay. Other questions for Gary here?
Just maybe one point on the COVID part. U of I came out today, and in their most recent testing of 789 people or so, their positive rate is now down below 1%, somewhere around 0.89.
Good.
Yeah, it looks good. So they are hitting it out of the park, more good news.
Okay, well.
So do we need a motion here to authorize?
Yes.
Well, I'd like to move to authorize requests for reimbursements under the city's Cares Act allocation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Art and a second by Maureen to authorize requests for reimbursements under the city's Cares Act allocation. I'll start the roll with Anne.
Aye.
Brandy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
And Maureen?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Gary, that report. That concludes our agenda tonight, but we will, so we'll go into reports. Anne, I'll start with you tonight.
All of my meetings seem to fall in two-week windows, so I have all of my reports are none, and tonight it is none.
Okay, that makes it easy. Now go to Brandy.
Yeah, you know, I'm just thinking I have transportation and URA coming up, but I have none to report tonight.
Second meeting, we'll have a bunch of, Mark?
Yeah, Palouse Knowledge Corridor met and are still getting their feet back under themselves. They're focusing mostly on Washington at the moment, but it'll be over here in Idaho soon, so we can expect representative from the Palouse Knowledge Corridor to make a presentation to us sometime in the not-too-distant future. Mostly on the Washington side, they're looking more at engineering and computer things, which are easy to translate into a business. Tony Broyles was also on the call, and she and I pointed out that, given the land grant mission of the universities, we should probably be focusing on agricultural product value-added segments. And that requires a lot more work in finding distributors and grocery shelf space to put these products on that might emerge from student projects and things like that. So we're working on trying to keep the Palouse Knowledge Corridors nose to the grindstone on enhancing agricultural product use in the Palouse. And they are also looking at rethinking the Palouse Knowledge Corridor name because they think it's a little too restrictive and not emblematic of the true goals of the organization. Life goes on.
Okay, Gina?
I'm with Anne and Brandy. My meetings are Thursday morning and Thursday afternoon.
Okay, then I'll go to Sandra.
I'm also out.
Okay, Maureen, do you have anything?
Okay, so I just wanna report that the Human Rights Commission has two events coming up. It's entitled Strengthening Relations, Relationships with the Community and Law Enforcement: Questions and Answer. The first one is on November 12th from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30, and it's addressing systemic bias regarding race and ethnicity. The second panel is on Tuesday, December 8th, from 5:00 to 6:30, and it's Mental Health and Crisis Intervention. So I wanna encourage people to attend those. There's a lot of discussion these days about kind of the relationship of mental health issues as well as race and ethnicity issues.
Okay, very good. Well, I have several. We had, on October 22nd, we had a Water Summit, which was kind of unique. Usually, we have this over at Switzer Engineering, and we had it out at the Best Western Room because we did it all by Zoom. I have no clue how many audiences were out there, but Mayor Johnson from Pullman, as well as myself, got a chance to give opening remarks and talk about it. And so we went through the usual things, because it was kind of an interesting thing. But thank God for Zoom and the virtual things that we can do these days. We also, on the 28th, I had an airport board meeting that we went through the usual stuff. And our flights are down 52% roughly for the year, and that's kind of where, I mean, it started off at 95% off. One of the first months, we're down 95% in April. And so we're inching our way back up, and we're about 50% roughly. We have two flights rather than five flights, but from a nationwide standpoint, nationwide is down 63%. And those numbers are starting to inch up as we're going. So it's just a matter of, it's a slow grind, ladies and gentlemen, but we're moving forward with it. On October 29th, we had a terminal advisory group meeting where we've got things down. Where one of the things was a contractors, we put out RFQs for contractors, it would be. We had eight qualified ones, which was good, and the team is moving that down to four. And we will be making a decision on which one of those four will be coming forward at our next board meeting, airport board meeting on November the 25th. So we're moving forward with that. Some of the things we covered in that terminal meeting was the forecast updates, how things are going. Eventually, there will be a community meeting, both in Pullman as well as over here in Moscow, so folks can see what's going on. We've got a dozen people that are on that advisory committee, by the way. And we saw different conceptual building layouts and different plans, and aircraft parking and gate layouts, and so that was a pretty interesting thing. And so the catch, of course, is staying within our budget, and so that's a big thing for us. And that's what we're working on. But we should have a contractor by the end of this year, and there will be more meetings into '21, so I will be able to give more information as we go along. But that's kind of the nuts and bolts of it. Gary, do you have anything for us tonight? Any reports?
Yes, sir. Just wanted to update the council that Ave Street is now open. So if you had a chance to drive on a brand-new road, that's, looks awful.
Gorgeous.
Certainly has changed a lot from when we began it.
30 years to do, but we got there.
Yeah. The police station, as you can see, the steel's coming up out of the ground, so it's looking better and better. Haddock Building, we're still moving forward with. We intend on being in that building probably by March if everything goes right. Currently waiting on the architect to submit some other numbers, and we'll be moving forward with that. And I sent an email out to council today. We've been informed by the Department of Commerce that we've received a $225,000 CDBG grant for improvements to Mountain View Park and Indian Hills Park for restrooms, pathways, and a parking project. So congratulations to everybody for that, anything we can have. Funding we can find to enhance our parks is well-spent. So with that, I don't have anything else.
Okay, well, with that, ladies and gentlemen, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
You bet.
Thank you very much. We'll conclude at 9:18, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you all.